Shall we pray? Oh God, we gather in this hall on a day in which we have had the opportunity to exercise our rights and privileges citizens to vote. We thank you for that freedom. We thank you for that responsibility. May all who gather in this hall be led by the spirit of justice and mercy. May your spirit be felt in all the discussions and all the decisions. Lead us all as neighbors and friends. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and call the 2015 Regular Meeting of City Council to order, November 3rd. We'll start with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask Mrs. Hoffman to take roll call.
Mr. Meyer.
Present.
Mr. Burke. Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudkamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, you've received a copy of the minutes from the October 6, 2015 Regular Council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented. Motion by Ms. Kyle, seconded by Mr. Dunhoff. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You've received a copy of the agenda for the meeting this evening. Are there any additions to be made at this time? I'll entertain a motion that the agenda be adopted as presented. Motion by Ms. Kyle, seconded by Mr. Dunhoff. Sorry, I think I just saw Corinne there sneaking in. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we'll move into our special presentations. First one is Catholic Charities. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Councilmember Gary Meyer and the City of Erlanger for having me speak tonight. I work as an anti-human trafficking advocate here locally in Covington, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about this very important issue. You've all received a brochure that either indicates that there are kids being forced to have sex, or that it's inquiring whether or not you are being forced. And our program at the Catholic Charities uses items like this to reach out to the community to see if there are victims of human trafficking and how we can help. So first, I'm going to tell you a little bit more about our office. We work directly and indirectly with victims of human trafficking from the Kentucky area statewide. So our office started in Louisville, Kentucky, when the Office of Refugee Resettlement was encountering time and time again forced labor and human trafficking in the area. And we grew our program so that we are now statewide helping combat this issue. So we educate the community and we do outreach so that also the community can help us to combat this issue as well. So here, first I wanted to tell you what human trafficking is. Human trafficking is when someone is forced to do something by the means of physical force, fraud, or coercion to do something against their will in which someone else is profiting from that. So there are two kinds of human trafficking that we're seeing here in northern Kentucky and throughout Kentucky, and they are forced commercial sex work and forced labor. Forced labor can commonly be seen on local farms, in local restaurants, or in salons or massage parlors and other locations. And then forced commercial sex work is often happening behind closed doors, at strip clubs, or sometimes in massage parlors and other entities throughout the community. So what can we do as community members and as a council and as professionals? Well, first, we can be informed and also encourage those we work with in our organizations to stay informed. As many of those who are exploited in human trafficking, they are from populations that are not as affluent and they don't really have means to take, to fully make their own choices, or they're easily exploited because they might not know how to speak the local language in the case of forced labor, or sometimes, which is often with our commercial sex trafficking, they are minors and older people are taking advantage of them and selling their bodies for money. Sixty percent of the trafficking victims we work with are minors, and they tend to be in the commercial sex work. In Kentucky, if you are a minor engaging in commercial sexual activity, you are automatically considered a victim of human trafficking and therefore are referred to the cabinet where we file for more services to help you. In the, so if there are children that may be trafficked, there are some indicators that might help you identify them. Oftentimes, they live in impoverished communities, but they don't have to. Often, usually, they're in the cities, but we also have victims that are from rural communities. But they might have things like tattoos that brand them as a sort of ownership to their pimps, or the adults who might be their boyfriends or their parent who wants to label them as property, and they know, so that the children know who they belong to and who they work for. So that is, so there might be tattoos. The child might have numerous cell phones, or they might have hotel keys on their person. And really, we know that kids don't really have a need to have multiple cell phones or hotel keys. Also, it's common that children in the foster care system or who are in and out of school, they might also be victims. And so if they are usually wearing pretty standard clothes to school and then, or maybe even not very nice clothes to school, and then they start coming to school with a couple of really nice items, like a brand-new pair of Ugg boots or a really expensive purse, but the rest of their wardrobe is really not very nice, that's also a really good indicator that somebody might be manipulating them and forcing them to do things. So if you do see signs like this among the things that you do, and we also have, well, if you do see signs like this, there are resources for you to use. Specifically, our office is always here to answer questions about an inquiry that you might have, that you might even just have a feeling that this might be forced labor or this might be human trafficking, in which case I encourage you to call the local Catholic charities and ask for the human trafficking office. And also, there, on the back of all of your brochures, you will find the number for the National Human Trafficking Hotline, and that number is a great resource for anyone to ask any questions they have about human trafficking, but also to, for them to then communicate to us if there is an issue. And they know the important authorities to contact if there is a good chance that there is an issue with human trafficking. So if, so we are here to combat this issue as an office, and we are proud to be able to offer victim services through offering crisis intervention, working with local law enforcement, working with FBI to help find victims and then offer them services. So our hope is that by educating all of you and potentially joining you on your workplaces to educate the professionals you work with, that we can increase victim identification and make Kentucky a place where people are no longer trafficked.
All right.
So thank you so much for having me, and feel free to contact me anytime.
All right. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's troubling to hear that. It's really difficult to hear and think about that, but it's comforting to know that you're here taking care of that. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the Community Heroes Proclamation.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to interrupt. I don't think that their whole group is here yet. Some of them are working at the polls.
Oh.
So I don't, are they all here yet?
We're still waiting for some of the participants to get in the polls.
Maybe we can juggle some things around.
Can we lay that a little bit, then, please?
Okay. I'll go ahead and to the next item on the agenda regarding the mayor's report. I know we have lists here talking about the historic video. Mrs. Dietz came to me this evening and had a great idea, maybe talking to NKU or one of the local universities about the possibility of filming some of our historical buildings rather than paying someone to do it. I know that some of the things that history in your own backyard offers is putting this stuff on YouTube, keeping it at the library, offering it to the grade schools locally. So, but we're not in a big rush, I don't think, to make those decisions, so I'm going to kind of table that for this evening. We'll look into some other options on that.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
At the first meeting on Thursday night, we had with the people in that class, that first speaker from Northern, might want to talk to him. He was pretty knowledgeable in Northern Kentucky, especially Erlanger.
I didn't see him speak.
I can't think of his name.
It's Paul Tenecotti.
Paul?
Tenecotti.
He's a professor at Northern, very educated on Northern Kentucky, and he really impressed me with what he knew about Erlanger.
Okay.
He was very involved when Minnie Churchill came for her visit, J.D. He was very involved when Minnie Churchill came for her visit.
Yeah, that's what he was telling me.
Yeah.
Very, very, I really enjoyed it.
Yeah, he's an interesting man.
And he's from the College of Communication?
I've got his stuff.
Oh, you do? Okay. I apologize for my delay here. I was going to talk about a couple of the other things that we had on the, I recently gave council as a quick update, and got out of order and got me, got me out of order. But, so I'm going to go from memory on some of these things. We've got, we're going to be talking a little bit more this evening about the interlocal agreement with SD1. We had a, we had a great Halloween. I haven't heard anything bad that happened during Halloween. I know we were very fortunate to have a, one of the policemen stop in our neighborhood and was handing out bags, and he got a lot of attention there. And he was quite funny, because he was telling all the kids that he had a very elaborate costume.
(laughing).
But they loved that.
I could not tell you how many parents told me personally, not knowing who I was, how impressed they were that police and fire were bringing children together and knowing that they're the heroes, that they should be, and not to be feared. It was priceless. It was great.
It was.
It was.
Yeah, really enjoyed seeing that. Got a lot of good pictures, so thank you, chief. I'm nuts now. I can't remember some of the other items I had there. I apologize for my...
You just got in a car accident. It's okay, mayor.
Yeah. It's a long story. Give me one second here. I apologize. We've, okay, so we've closed the city survey, or the time has passed for those, the surveys to all be turned back in. These are the surveys that were sent out with the tax bill and the whistle stop, and we've had a pretty good response. The written responses, there were, there were seventy-three written responses, at least on paper, and then we had eighty-two that had responded online. And I've read a lot of those, the electronic responses, and there's a lot of reoccurring themes in there. I'm sure we'll get into those more in the next few months, but some really good information there from the residents. Our caboose is going to be returned tomorrow.
Yay!
Yeah, so they'll get started early in the morning, and they'll start setting up the crane, and they're really not expecting the caboose to move until about noon, but that should be exciting. I saw a photo of the caboose sitting at the Progress Rail. I couldn't believe it.
No.
I mean, it looks brand spanking new.
Doesn't even look like the same one.
It's incredible.
I know. Fabulous. They did an awesome job.
Yeah. So I see this, this Thursday...
I would like to suggest that we invite them to a council meeting.
Well, that's a great idea.
All of them. There's like three different partners with that whole thing.
Yes. I mean, I, yeah, I think maybe we need a proclamation and a big, I mean, a big deal.
That sounds like a great idea.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, we've got Progress Rail, there's Maxim Crane, and Turnbull Construction, correct?
It was J.
TMS.
Yeah, TMS.
TMS, okay.
Yeah, we need to honor those people. That was a great gift.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that's a great idea. This Thursday will be our third municipal government academy. I know we've kicked it back and forth. Is that going to be here, or is that going to be at?
Public Works.
It'll be at the Public Works Building. It's going to be focusing on Public Works this, this week. It's a five-week program, and this is to give the residents who have any interest a better understanding of how we operate and how things are done, and really, try to give them a good understanding of, of the whole scope of the city operations. It's been really fantastic so far, what I've seen. Really enjoyed that. I appreciate Becky putting that together and Mark working on that, and all the rest of the staff, too, that's had a part in that. We are continuing to work on our city logo concepts. We should have some concepts that we will be presenting at the next council committee meeting for your review. We are still making some progress on the Norfolk Southern Bridge. We should, let's see, I talked with Mr. Vioxx about having a meeting on the sixteenth, and just kind of making sure that we're all heading in the same direction on this. And Griffin Elite Sports Training is open now. You might have noticed there's more cars there in the parking lot. If you haven't had a chance to see that place, you really should stop in and just poke your head, and I'm sure they'd invite you in. It is really incredible, very beautiful facility. And that's all I had. Thank you for your patience. How are we doing? Do we have everybody?
I haven't seen anyone.
Nobody else has come in?
I haven't seen anyone.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on to the committee reports. We'll start with public safety. Ms. Sudkamp, Ms. Kyle?
Yes, sir. I wanted everyone to know that the police department has ordered twenty-five new body cams, and at no cost whatsoever to the City of Erlanger. They were all purchased with seizure money. Yes. Good job, guys. And I wanted to let you know that the police department will have two new graduates from the police academy this coming Friday. They've been in school for twenty-three weeks. It's Nick Van Hondorf and Garrett Hines, and I met them, and they're, they're just awesome. And then they will have fourteen weeks of field training in, out in, before they're put out on their own.
Wow. Yeah, the body worn camera testing will be completed this month. The staff met with Mr. Fields regarding an equipment and software selection capabilities and funding. Wolfcom Vision is the vendor selected. This project will include video management software, and we're also collaborating with Villa Hills and Elsmere for reduced pricing. Then also, we would like to announce the sergeant's promotional written test was given October 21st. Interviews were conducted on October 28th. We were all really impressed with the performance of all the candidates. It was really quite impressive.
It was unbelievable.
And Officer Kim Claire finished first in the process, and the remaining candidates, Strange, Gerdler, Stoltz, Marksberry, and Hines will be included in the candidate pool. That pool will be in effect for one year from the date that Officer Claire is promoted, and I believe that is February of 2016. And we'd also like to mention that Officer Claire is the first woman to be promoted to that office, so it's kind of a special event. And then we also wanted to report a Back the Blue event was held at Rappi's Crescent Springs. This event was attended by several officers and the entire command staff. And that's all I have, but Chief is in the house.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to fire and EMS. Mrs. Skidmore, Mr. Meyer?
Okay, I've got a couple of things. I was looking at our little report on the amount, the number of students that the fire department reached this week, or this month, and I'm like, oh my gosh, four thousand two hundred and fifty-five. How come there be that many kids? They went to, they went to the Erlanger Baptist Trunk or Treat.
(laughing).
Oh my gosh. We went, they were wrapped around the block.
There was not a parking place in Erlanger.
There was no parking lot at all.
It was crazy.
And it's like, for candy? But, I mean, it was, it was awesome. I, and it does, it says that of the forty-two hundred and fifty-five, two thousand seven hundred and fifty of them were attributed to trunk or treat.
Wow.
Isn't that incredible? And I believe Rick Bull, I asked him to talk to, he doesn't really want to, but I begged him, so he's going to elaborate a little bit on a couple of things for us.
All right, thank you.
Chief Whitaker couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to stand in his place. I spoke to Councilwoman Skidmore, and she had asked me about the FedEx traffic collision on northbound seventy-five, and they asked me to talk about that a little bit. That actually happened on the shift that follows mine, but it was Tuesday, October 27th. I'm sure everybody knows about it. Interstate was shut down for about six hours. About 7:15 in the morning, horrible time to have that rush hour and everything else, but on northbound seventy-five, just prior to 2:75, there was a FedEx semi tractor trailer carrying two trailers. I don't know the exact reason why, but he ended up colliding with another semi, and they collided with a car. Both the FedEx driver and another person in that were trapped in the vehicle. Per our policies, Florence has automatic aid. They're dispatched to northbound seventy-five. They responded, Erlanger responded, and for just over an hour, it took crews to get in there, get to these people, and extricate them. I just had a class, October 19th, in Alexandria on heavy vehicle extrication, where we had a mock-up at a tow site where we had cars underneath semi tractor trailers. We had to lift the trailers, we had a, the actual semi on top of a car. We had to stabilize and climb inside, remove a dummy. That's part of the training that we do. And she had asked why Alexandria was dispatched and why Alexandria was there, and some people had asked her. Alexandria Fire Department has a heavy rescue vehicle, 120, but on that vehicle, they have six dedicated lines for tools. We have the Jaws of Life, everybody knows about, the cutters, the spreaders, rams, everything else. We have three that we could use at a time on Engine 51. Florence has some. They have six on this vehicle that they can run at the same time. They also have airbags and everything else, so I don't believe they were actually used. I think we got to the person before they were able to get there, but that's why Alexandria was dispatched. They have the equipment in the Area Four heavy rescues for that type of thing. Luckily, it was minor injuries, I believe. Both people that were entrapped were extricated and taken to UC. As a precautionary note, I believe the interstate was closed for five and a half, six hours. I don't know the exact time, so. Any questions?
Rick, yeah.
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
I just want, I mean, I know it was chaotic. I mean, I saw the officers after they came back, and they looked like they'd been beat half to death. But why six hours? I mean, I mean, I get it that it has to be a very involved investigation and whatever, but there was a fatality in Indiana that same morning, and that interstate was only closed for like an hour.
I don't know, I don't know, Chief Wilson, I don't know what kind of investigation was needed.
Okay. I'm just curious. I mean, I'm certainly not chastising anybody.
No, 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 not at all. I understand that. I'm not sure why it took that long to get everything reopened. I know there are, you know, sometimes difficulties getting the proper records, services there to remove those type, because I mean, that's heavy-duty equipment that has to come, and I'm not sure what happened with the trailers. I know there was discussion, at least one of the trailers, if not both, for this FedEx. They were talking about bringing in a new tractor trailer front to try and hook up to them to get them out of there. That plays into it sometimes. I mean, if you have a two-vehicle accident, it's easier to clear, you know, a normal passenger car than it is, and you had three vehicles involved. The other semi that was struck, from what I understand, the front axle and wheels were completely torn off the front of it.
Wow.
So.
Thank you. I've been curious.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'm just curious.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
I have nothing to add.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is the, is our Public Works. Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore?
Yeah, I would like to thank TMS Construction. They dedicated a lot of time and materials to remove the old tracks for the caboose to be coming back. They've really put in a lot of effort, and they've done a nice job.
So as you mentioned, Mayor, municipal governor night will be at Public Works, and we'll be down there at the Public Works Building, so they will be having it there. Division Street is almost complete with that, and, you know, it's getting close to that time of year, so December 1st, the pothole line opens up, and, you know, I always like to advertise for that. I do. SD1 interlocal agreement, I know you're going to have a discussion about that, and there were some issues, so is that going to be handled? Mr. Gatlin and you had some discussions?
Yeah, I don't know if we want maybe an update at this time from Public Works, so, or if you want to update, just because it's, it's a game changer, so to speak.
Okay, so we'll hold on to that, then, so no updates.
You want to do it now?
Nope, we can wait.
We, okay, we can wait, and then we do the resolution.
Yeah. And then precision concrete cutting, I wasn't involved in that discussion, so are we, is that Mr. Vioxx?
No, that was, well, Ed Milliken and I had watched them kind of shave off trip hazard on one of our sidewalks, and they were going to survey, they said they would do a free survey for us of three sidewalk miles of the city, but they wouldn't be able to get to that till about, did they say mid-November or mid-December?
It should be around the second week of November.
Okay.
Okay. So, and then Ed is in the house, and you should have received the report from Rick.
I have it.
Okay. All right, thank you. So do we want to? Okay, that makes sense. All right. All right, the next item then on the report is administration. Mr. Howard, Ms. Cahill?
Yes, yes, Mayor. We only have one item on our agenda for legislative agenda, and that's, and that's the Whitman invoices, and we've got a resolution to be read tonight in regard to that, about paying our invoices outside the monthly retainer to be paid within 20 days, so.
Okay, and I have the upcoming events. We have the senior Thanksgiving luncheon, which is Wednesday, November the 18th, from 10:30 to 12:30 at the library. They are taking reservations now. They go quickly, very, very quickly, and I'm betting they're already filled. But I could be wrong.
But I could be wrong. If anybody from City Council would like to attend and help or whatever, would you please let Kim know by November the 13th, Friday? The 13th, yes. Let her know if you can, if you're going to attend. And then the tree lighting ceremony is Saturday, December the 5th, from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Depot Park. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be making a special appearance at the park to celebrate the start of the holiday season. We will light the tree at approximately 7:15. Santa will be available for photos after the tree lighting. Bring your own camera. There will also be refreshments and entertainment. And then the holiday extravaganza is Sunday, September, or December, I'm sorry, 6th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Erlanger Library. It's time for our annual holiday extravaganza. Enjoy carriage rides from 1:00 to 4:00. Visit with Santa from 1:30 to 3:30. Bring your own camera, please. Enjoy a performance by Chester Charming, the North Pole's Magic Chimney Sweep, and create crafts from 1:30 to 3:00, or while supplies last. So a lot of things going on in December, and if you can squeeze us in, that would be nice.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Andrews is in the house. I see.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to Economic Development and Finance. Mr. Blankenship, Ms. Pitts?
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Simpson, the owner of Johnny's Car Wash, is going to be with us for our December 1 council meeting, is our featured business. Johnny's Car Wash is celebrating their 50th anniversary of keeping cars clean in Erlanger, which I need to get mine there. And also, Daryl Salee, the owner of Accutex, was going to be here tonight, but is unable to be here. We're going to attempt to have him come to a future council meeting to honor him for his 25th anniversary of doing business in Erlanger.
Okay, great, thank you.
And also, the audit report's nearly completed. We expect to have the final draft in our hands and ready for review by tomorrow. The final changes will then be made, and the report will be bound and ready for distribution. We're requesting a finance committee meeting for November 17th in order for the auditors to make their formal presentation of the 2015 report. And Greg's in the house.
Mr. Angelman? All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is our codes, building, and zoning. Mr. Dunhoff?
Okay, first, on the board of adjustment vacancy. We're just going to report progress on that. We're still working on that, so.
All right.
Secondly, at the October 20th, 2015 committee meeting, council heard a short presentation from Wayne Smith, owner of Smith Towing, who is requesting a city change of text of zoning ordinance to allow towing operations in Business Park 1 BP-1 Zone. In past committee meetings, council requested Mr. Smith talk with Corporex, who is the major owner of land in the development of property in this area, is okay with the request. Enter hearing from Mr. Bob Lessell, representing Corporex, that they are okay with the text amendment, provided that additional landscaping will be included to screen the buildings. The committee is in favor of Mr. Smith's request for a text amendment. The action will be taken is make a motion to have the city attorney, Mr. Gatlin, prepare a resolution to give David Hahn the authority to file an application with the Planning Development Services of Kenton County for a text amendment adding vehicle towing and auto repair as a conditionally permitted use, provided that, A, the lot size is minimum of 8.5 acres; B, the lot has a minimum of 600 feet of road frontage; C, there are no gasoline pumps; D, all towed vehicles are stored indoors, except vehicles awaiting minor service may be stored outdoors temporarily; E, all vehicles awaiting repair are screened from view from any right-of-way or adjacent property. Do want to make a note that the above proposed texts will apply to all properties within the B1 zone, not just this property. So we are making a motion to Mr. Gatlin to prepare that document.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Sudkamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And that's all I have. Mr. Hahn's in the house.
All right, thank you. Next item is our progress in revitalization. Mrs. Pitts, Mr. Cahill?
I shall receive your report from Becky. We have nothing to highlight today, and Becky's in the house.
All right. Wonderful, thank you. You've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt, or that they be adopted as presented? Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Ms. Skidmore. All in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, do we have everybody now? Okay. All right, we're ready. Okay. So we'll go ahead and have our proclamation regarding community heroes. Do you guys want to come up forward, come up front before? Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, if you know you're going to be recognized, come on up. That's a great idea. Yeah.
We know how you like pictures.
Why wouldn't she? She's beautiful.
You got to watch her, she's got a camera in her hand.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started, because I read slow. So this is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas in 2010, Larry and Serena Owen began the Community Hero Award Program to express their appreciation and to honor community members for their selfless devotion in serving within the community. And whereas in 2015, the Erlanger-Elsmere community heroes are Mary E. Smith Cemetery Board and Committee, Erlanger Krogers Doug Mau, Skies the Limits Richard Young, Erlanger's Nicole Comer, Elsmere Baptist Church's Martin Evans and Laura Evans, Erlanger-Elsmere Community Reunions Dee Redding and Thelma Gardner, the Erlanger Historical Society, Erlanger-Elsmere Schools, and First Baptist Church of Elsmere's Richard Tyler and Phyllis Tyler, Elsmere Markets Nash Patel, Erlanger City Administrator Mark Fields, Erlanger City Council and Staff, Elsmere Mayor Marty Lenhoff, Elsmere City Council and Staff. And whereas the above-named individuals have made a difference in the Erlanger-Elsmere communities by making a commitment to improve the quality of life to those who live and work there. And whereas the above-named individuals perform collectively to provide exemplary service for our community with integrity and pride, recognizing the mission statement of the city of Erlanger, and whereas the city of Erlanger hereby recognizes and honors each of these individuals for their outstanding service to the city. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim November 4th, 2015, to be 2015 Community Heroes Day in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens given under my hand and the seal of the city of Erlanger on this third day of November 2015. Are there any reports from our representatives this evening? Yes, Renee, go ahead.
Kenton County Alliance, I just want to reiterate what Patty said about, you know, the policeman and the trunk or treat and being on the street corners and stuff. That was one of the things that Kenton County Alliance talked about at the last meeting. And I jumped in and said that Erlanger was already doing what they were recommending. And Patty reiterated that tonight, so.
I mean, people, it was incredible. I mean, the moms and the dads, I mean, and they did not know that I was on city council. They just, were just talking about how impressed they were. And it was, you know, the kids were getting their pictures taken on the bumper of the fire truck, and, you know, they were rushing to the lights. It was, it was really neat.
So you must have had a, were you dressed up as something, and you had a mask? And that's why they didn't know that you were? Because everybody knows.
I was like a Maleficent. I was Maleficent. Is that how you say her name? Yes. I was very green with big black horns.
All right. All right, thank you, Renee. Are there any other reports?
Oh, look at you. Hey, you were gone. You were out of town. You missed it. What can I say?
All right, we'll move on to the reports of our city operations. We'll start with Mr. Vioxx, city engineer.
I have nothing to report this evening, sir.
All right, then we'll move on to the city administrator, Mr. Fields.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I was putting in order. SD1, right. Yeah. There's a resolution that you've been handed out, and I don't know if you had a chance to review it or not, but it's SD1, and what it is requesting is the mayor to go ahead and sign this interlocal agreement. There have been some things that have occurred in the past week that have precipitated this. We've had a couple lateral line failures that are going to need attention. SD1 has made the statement that they will not do this because we have not signed the interlocal agreement. So that means one of two things, that either our residents would be responsible for fixing that, or we would have to stop and step in and fix it, or we let this situation continue with the upcoming winter, meant with Public Works, the mayor. I just don't think it's a situation that we can allow to go on. It's going to end up costing more in the long run than what is happening right now. So the resolution is what we're going to ask for tonight, for you to approve for us to sign the interlocal agreement with SD1, so that they will take back the lateral lines and take responsibility for least repairing, especially the ones that we have right now pending. So, you know, if Mr. Gatlin wants to add anything to that.
Yeah, I mean, the resolution says a little bit more than that. If you read through the resolution, basically it states that the city of Erlanger are signing the two agreements. There's a master agreement, which SD1's requiring, as well as the specific lateral line interlocal agreement, the two are kind of tied together. And what the resolution states is, in summary, that we really feel we have no choice but to sign this resolution, that we don't agree with the interlocal agreements, that we're going to continue to seek a better regional solution, that we're going to also continue to work with the SD1 board, other municipalities, potentially the legislature, to look for a better long-term solution. And we don't really appreciate having a gun to our head saying, "Sign this agreement, or we won't fix your residence." So there is some language in here that's a little strong, so you might want to read through it. I mean, we don't say anything that I think is not accurate. But the bottom line is, I think it will show our frustration to SD1 that it seems unfair and unfortunate for them to create this interlocal agreement without the input of any of the municipalities, maybe beyond Covington. We have floated this resolution by other cities in the area. In fact, we will be at Fort Wright tomorrow night, or is it Park Hills tomorrow night?
Park, Park Hills tomorrow night.
Park Hills tomorrow night. We were at Crescent Springs last week. We will be at Park Hills next week.
Uh, Fort Mid, or Fort Wright.
Fort Wright next week. And I think all of us non-river cities are kind of in the same boat, and we're going to be urging a similar resolution to be passed, again, with the goal of communicating with the SD1 board. We have been in communication with Garth Kuhnhein, who is one of the Kenton County representatives on the SD1 board, and Rick Wessels, who's also on the SD1 board. They seem pretty steadfast, but we think if we can at least have eight to 10 municipalities say, hey, you know, we might be forced to sign this thing, but we're not done arguing our cause.
Right, there you go.
The other thing that I think's important to note is, with the lateral line interlocal agreement, both parties can cancel it with 30 days' written notice. So this isn't something we're locked into for forever, but it seems like the only solution to have the immediate situation addressed.
Yeah. It's been a lot of work so far, just trying to get, you know, other cities on board. And we've, we've all taken a lot of time in trying to get other people to buy in to this, and, you know, really help to strengthen our argument. This obviously isn't my first choice. It seems like, you know, going ahead and signing the agreement may, you know, weaken our side. But, you know, just like Mr. Gatlin said, ultimately, this can be canceled. You know, we can cancel it just as easily as they can.
Another avenue, yeah.
And we are going to go, we're going to continue to pursue a more long-term amicable agreement. And if we, if it takes having to pursue, taking it to legislature, being that SD1 is a creature of statute, then that's what we'll, we'll pursue. So.
Right.
I appreciate that. So let's see, what do we need to do to move forward?
We can do that in the legislation.
Okay, we'll do it. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, two more things. I want to make everybody aware, we did today submit an economic development assistance, technical assistance grant. Through Fairground, we've been talking about that for several months. We did get it completed today. Well, it was actually completed yesterday. It was submitted today. We have requested an amount, a little excess of $80,000. That will be used, if we are awarded that, to do all the studies that it will take to do for all of the property that is along Houston Road, including the Showcase Property, all along Lower Erlanger Road, and all of those things, for all, everything we have to do, with all the engineering fees and everything else that we have to do for that. So hopefully, we'll hear something and maybe get awarded that grant. Just wanted to, I know that we did apply for that. Also, before we adjourn, I would like to have an executive session to talk about a personnel issue.
All right. Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to our city attorney, Mr. Gatlin.
Basically, I've given my report. If anyone cares about the gubernatorial election results, with 51% reporting Matt Bevan is ahead by six points.
Six points is a lot.
Yeah. 6%. So.
That's a lot, yeah.
With how many reporting?
51%. And I don't know where in the state that is.
Actually, I think 58.6% are reported.
You're watching it, too.
Are other people watching it on their phones, the results as they come in?
All right, we'll move on to the city council attorney's report. Mr. Wickman, do you have anything to report?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. Sometime in the near future, not necessarily the 17th, but certainly before the end of the year, pardon me. I think we need to have a committee meeting in regard to the franchise fee ordinance that we have. As you all might remember, and I was reminded of this by the Supreme Court decision that Missy identified in her report, recently the Supreme Court determined that a fee on property to fund 9/11 services was constitutional and valid. As many of you might recall, three years ago, when we imposed a franchise fee on electricity and natural gas and other energy distribution, the validity of that was disputed. Kenton County was the first to impose a, that kind of a fee. Campbell County followed suit. Then some landlord association litigated that issue in Campbell County. Campbell County Circuit Court determined that the fee was valid, and they went to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court also determined the fee was invalid. Back in 2013, we didn't know if that fee was valid or not. So Erlanger decided to fund their 911 system through a 3% fee on your energy bill, electric and natural gas. That fee was That fee was for a period of three years. That three-year period of time is going to expire next year. So we have to decide whether we're going to continue with that franchise fee, or we're going to change the amount of the fee, change the duration from three years to a maximum of 20 years, or adopt a fee like Kenton County's on real estate. Those are the three things that have to be decided. My point is, the franchise fee expires next year in 2016. We need to make that decision early about what we're going to do, because if we continue with the franchise fee, the administrative regulations require many things of the energy providers, which in our case is Duke Energy and Owen County Rural Electric, to jump through some hoops to get the approval of the util- of the, they keep changing the name of it. I forget what the name of it is, but it's basically the Utility Commission of Kentucky to approve their bidding on those franchises. So we need to make some decisions pretty early. I would recommend we do that before the end of the year, and I would recommend that we do that in a committee meeting sometime before the end of the year. Yes, ma'am?
I have one question. I know when Kenton County first started this, they charged the fee per parcel.
That's correct.
Was Campbell County talking about apartments by unit or just apartment house?
They, the Supreme Court decision uses the term units. If, if that is correct, then Campbell County's ordinance is different and less broad than the Kenton County ordinance. I don't know what, I don't know, I haven't read the Campbell County ordinance, so I'm not sure that it applies to occupied units, because I don't know how you figure that out. How's the tax commissioner, the PVA, know whether property is occupied as multiple units or, you know, somebody buys a house in Erlanger and they convert it, it's a single-family residence, they convert it to two apartments or three apartments? How does the property valuation administrator know that? I, I don't know the answer to your question, but you're correct that the two ordinances are different.
Yeah, I thought when I read that, that that's what I was thinking. Kenton County didn't have that.
Yeah. I can say this from being involved in those discussions two or three years ago, and Kenton County's is per parcel. They had talked about it at the time of doing a unit ordinance, the same way that Campbell County had done. And I think there were some of those questions that you have just discussed with Mr. Wickman about, how do you do this? How will it be built? How do, how do you collect it? How do you do those things? Identifying what is a unit, what isn't a unit, and doing some of those things, so. I'm not sure exactly the process or procedure that Campbell County put into place to do it. And there was some questions, because we knew that the, I guess Apartment Owners Association was going to file that lawsuit and let it work through the court, so I think we were waiting probably to see that. When we looked at this three or four years ago, trying to fund 911, when we had all the other cities in Kenton County with us, you know, we all sat in this room, and probably that unit fee was probably the fairest and could have been the lowest amount of any fee that we could have charged to fund 911. I mean, it was a stable fee that would have lasted. You wouldn't have seen that decrease. In fact, you may have saw it increase when, in fact, new units were built. So there was some deep discussion about that, but we weren't sure about the constitutionality of it and some things, but now, now we've got that answer. So having those discussions is a great idea. Now, I'd send something to the mayor earlier last week when that first came out, you know, talking about that and saying that we should bring this back up and do it, because, you know, this is a decision that we have to make or we should be making in long-term funding. However, also, we also see that KLC came out with their, again, priorities for legislation in 2016, and 911 funding is right up at the top again. So, you know, you may see new legislation coming out of the legislature this year, you know, enacting something else or changing cellphone fees or whatever it may do. That, that seems to be the flavor that they always go after, and Frankfurt is trying to do something with the cellphones to tie it back, so I'm not sure what's going to come of that. But either way, if, in fact, our franchise fee is expiring next year, we need to take some kind of actions, because that pretty much funds most of our 911 costs that we have.
Frank, will you, I think it's a great idea that we talk about it on November 17th. Will you be able to put some kind of summary together of our three? You, it sounded like you've mentioned three different options that we have.
Absolutely.
That would be helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask, Ms. Hoffman, I know we've talked about a lot of things for the 17th. I know Greg's got his audit coming. He's got those people coming to present that. I know that's going to be pretty time-consuming. There was something else that was going to be on the 17th also. I think the logo presentation's going to be on the 17th.
Yes.
And we've already got that set up. So I want to make sure we have enough time, huh?
Can't you just move something to next week?
Well, we could have a special meeting, have this next week, maybe. That's what I'm, that's why I'm trying to see. I know, because I think there was maybe even something else for a committee meeting on the 17th.
I'm looking here. I got the auditors.
What?
The auditor, the audit report.
Is there anything from last meeting that we had talked about, doing another one? Love was left over from October that we moved?
No.
No?
I don't think so.
What's the actual date of the franchise agreement termination?
June, latter part of June, June 23rd, June 26th, something like that.
So realistically, we have till the end of this year to figure it out?
Oh, yeah. We don't have to do it next week.
Yeah.
We don't have to do it on the 17th. We can do it anytime, but of course, you're getting into holidays.
Right, yeah, no, and that time, we just went through that process in Independence. It's a time-consuming process. So we want to know what we're doing by January.
I agree with that.
The Norfolk Southern Bridge, when were you discussing that? Did you say the 17th?
Oh, that was, that was more, so, a meeting with the, um...
Okay.
Public Works and Mr. Vioxx.
Would everybody like to schedule it for maybe next Tuesday?
I have no problem. I mean, you know.
Me neither.
If we need to do it, let's do it.
Tuesdays are counted.
Unless you want to do it in December, and I think too many people will probably be out of town or planning trips and doing things when we get that close to the holidays. Is that okay?
What's that?
Yeah, I think so. So that'd be Tuesday, the 10th?
Yes.
Okay. We'll put together a special meeting to discuss.
Okay. So we'll schedule a committee meeting, yeah. Just, then we'll just talk about the 911 fees at that meeting alone, and then we'll do everything else on the 17th.
All right. All right, anything else to report? Okay, so we've heard the reports of our representatives in the city operations. Do I entertain a motion to adopt it as presented? Motion by Mr. Howard, second by Ms. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Mrs. Hoffman, do we have any correspondence this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The City of Erlanger received a thank you card from Jan Cassidy thanking the city for their support during the passing of her parents. And that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have one.
Okay.
Hey, this one is for Chief Todd Whitaker, but he's not here tonight, but I promised this person that I would read this. And you have to realize, this is from a second grader, so he doesn't say Chief Whitaker, he says Chief Todd. So this is to dear Chief Todd.
That's cute.
Thank you for coming to my school Lindeman last Friday, October the 30th, 2015, to help me with my project and my book report on firefighters. My class really enjoyed asking you questions about firefighters and firefighting. Sincerely, Chance. And he actually printed his name and wrote it and drew a smiley face. And I was told that he actually typed this one finger at a time, so.
That's cute.
It's kind of the way I do it.
Gracious.
All right. Thank you, Renee.
Thanks.
Any other correspondence? All right, then we'll move on to the citizens' public comments. We've got one person signed up this evening, Mr. James Brown.
Um, yeah.
All right, thank you. Then, any other correspondence or, excuse me, comments? All right, then we'll move on to bids. Mrs. Hoffman, Mr. Vioxx, are there any bids tonight?
No, sir.
All right. Then we'll go on to old business. Does anyone have any unfinished business to discuss? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to new business. Does anybody have any new business to discuss?
Actually, I do, Mr. Mayor. I have drafted an ordinance that would look at reducing, or reduce the insurance premium tax from 10% to 8%. I'd like to request that that be added for a first reading on the December meeting. I'll send a draft to the council this evening.
You did the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am.
Why?
Why not?
You have two attorneys here. Why would you draft an ordinance?
Well, it would be for, it's, it's up for review. Will you be sharing that with everybody?
Yeah, I would be.
Okay. I don't think there's anything that says that it has to be an attorney that drafts it.
I just asked why.
Okay.
I just thought it was odd.
All right, so that would be the December 1st meeting, premium tax. What was the title again?
Mr. Mayor, wouldn't it be appropriate for a committee to discuss this before it's put on for the first reading?
Well, I originally had thought that, but I know we, in the past, at least this year, we've introduced ordinances without going to committee first, so I thought that was okay to do.
Is there a possibility we'll have a chance to review it before the next committee meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think there'd be an opportunity to discuss.
That's fine. It would provoke some discussion. I'd like to think about that before we talk about it, so.
Yeah. I would just say, maybe we should take a look at it, and then, it's hard, it's hard to say without even seeing.
Right.
What?
And does that fit into our budget that we?
That's a great question.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect this year's budget, but it would look at, we'd be able to plan it into the fiscal year 16, 17 budget. Yeah, for us to change the insurance premium tax rate, we need to do so past the second reading of the ordinance prior to March 23rd. So this gives us a little bit of time to actually discuss it and decide whether that's something we actually want to do. But waiting too long would prevent us from doing anything, and that would be effective July the 1st.
Okay. Mr. Cahill?
No, I've heard what the, what the, bringing tax.
All right, we'll take a look at that. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. We'll move on to legislation then. First item is an ordinance, the HC-2 map amendment, second reading.
So an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Erlanger, County of Kenton, Kentucky for area commonly known as an approximate 10.8 acre area located at the terminus of Viex Road approximately 600 feet east of Houston Road from HC-2, with the development plan to HC-2 with no development planned by summary. We're asking the Erlanger Council to approve said zoning map amendment, changing the zoning for the approximate 10.8 acre area, and it merely is removing the development plan.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt? This ordinance is read. Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Sudcamp. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion carried. Next one is the ordinance, the R-1F to NC Zone Change, first reading.
Excuse me. This is an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Erlanger, County of Kenton, Kentucky for an approximately 3,900 square foot area located on the southwest side of Conwell Avenue between Dixie Highway and Home Street, approximately 175 feet northwest of Dixie Highway from the R-1F Zone to Neighborhood Commercial Zone.
All right, I ask the Assistant City Clerk to please note in the minutes the first reading of this ordinance. Next item is the ordinance regarding the Renaissance overlay removal, first reading.
This is an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Erlanger, County of Kenton, Kentucky for an approximately, approximate 53 acre area located on the north and south sides of Dixie Highway bounded by Alice Street on the east and the Boone County line on the west, removing the Renaissance protection overlay zone from the properties within the described areas from R-1G RP to R-1G R2 RP to R2 NC RP to NC and NC2 RP to NC2. By, in summary, this removes the Renaissance protection from the R-1G zone, the R2 zone, and the NC and NC2 zone.
I'd like that repeated.
Is that like the, all the area?
It is the entire area on Dixie Highway. We're removing the Renaissance overlay.
Gotcha, okay.
Primarily because Mr. Hahn, it's, he's discussed why.
Yeah. Oh, no, I, yeah, I just want.
Right, so it's just removing that zone?
Yeah.
Or that overlay from that?
You explained it perfectly. I just felt like bingo or something.
No, I, there's, right. I agree.
Sounded like a cast thing called Star Wars.
Why do you think I paused when I looked at this? I'm looking at this like, wow.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, I ask the Assistant City Clerk to please note that the, in the minutes that we've had the first reading. Next item is the municipal order for surplus vehicles.
So municipal order of the City of Erlanger and Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS 82.083 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. By attachment is a schedule of the eight or nine items and the disposal method.
All right. Maybe there's a vehicle there I could purchase.
God love you. Sure isn't that fantasy.
Yeah, you don't need one.
Don't you give him a cruezer.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt this municipal order as read?
We took the license siren off.
I'm sorry, Dyson.
You're like the Blues Brothers.
All right, so, I'm sorry, a motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Ms. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. The final one is a resolution for the payment of the Wickman invoices.
So resolution of the City Council, the City of Erlanger, providing the procedure for the payment of invoices from Frank A. Wickman, Professional Service Corporation, for their legal services pursuant to the contracts with the city. In summary, it provides a vehicle, we discussed in committee, providing for a manner in which the Wickman invoices are paid, so there is hopefully no further confusion.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this? Resolution is read. Motion by Mr. Hi, Mr. Howard, second by Ms. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, with that, then, let's see, we're not going to adjourn, we're going to go to Mr. Howard.
No, we've got the SD-1.
The SD-1 resolution.
Oh, yes, okay, right. Let me add this in here. Resolution for SD-1.
So resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement with SD-1 regarding right-of-way lateral lines, but setting forth disagreement with SD-1. I'm going to read the specific paragraph that you're authorizing, that the mayor is au-. The mayor is authorized to enter into the interlocal agreement and master agreement. They are attached. It's called a master interlocal cooperation agreement for infrastructure projects, programs, or policies, as well as an agreement for participation in the private sewer lateral program, so that Erlanger's residents may be afforded protections which have been unilaterally taken away. Further, while authorization is being given for the interlocal agreement master agreement, the mayor should continue examine, to examine the transfer that occurred pursuant to KRS 22135, as well as the legality of certain provisions in the interlocal agreement master agreement. Further, the mayor of Erlanger should work with the legislature, other municipalities, and SD one Board of Trustees to work on a regional solution. This authorization is solely to protect the financial well-being of Erlanger's residents, and does not constitute agreement with the positions taken by SD one.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by J.D., second by Ms. Sudcamp. Any discussion?
This hurts.
Yeah.
This really hurts. I mean, I feel like I'm being held up, I really do.
Yeah.
It is.
I honestly do. I mean, this, I, you know, reading this, it's minutia, I mean, but, yeah, okay, I just wanted to record.
Don't have a choice, I know.
I mean, did, have you had a chance to read the interlocal agreement? Is that what you're saying, hurts? It is.
Yeah.
It's extremely painful.
Especially when it just covers the part that's under the street, right? That's all we're talking about, the person that's under the...
Sidewalks and street in the right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
But just the pavement within the right-of-way.
It is, it's painful. It's very one-sided. Yeah, it's a tough, tough pill to swallow here.
Harold, you all, for all of your passion, and, especially you, Tyson.
Thank you.
Because you were the only one that stood up initially.
Well, I hope we continue it. We're going to continue.
Yeah, he did initially, you were the only one, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you. Well, we'll, we'll continue. I hope we can continue with the same vigilance to move forward. All right, so then, do we want to go ahead and go into a discussion?
Has you approved a motion for the SD one?
Oh, yeah, right, excuse me, yeah, thank you. Yes, so we were in discussion, can I, yeah, okay, so we, we had a motion, a second on the floor, in discussion, and so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Definitely aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
That's why there's two pages of whereas's, if you read through them.
Yeah, really.